You all ready? Everybody ready? Yeah. Anna, you ready?
Yep.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular Floyd County's Board of Education meeting on August the 22nd, 2022. Eve Slung. Dr. Varia. Keith Smallwood. Junior Newsom.
Yes.
And Linda Gerhart. Let the record show that all members are present and we have a quorum. Our focus areas are safety and health of students and staff to remain physically solvent, attendance of at least 94 percent, social emotional well-being of all students and staff, post-secondary readiness, proficiency in all academic areas, and ACT of at least 19.5. Let me remind you that if you want to speak, to sign the clipboard at the table in front of me, be sure to put your name, address, and phone number if you want to be contacted. At this time, I think we have an eighth grader from Stumbo Elementary named Jackson Nelson who's going to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jackson. That was very good. At this time, we'll have a moment of
And I done the proper thing. I gave them a phone number to call. Don't know if they called or not. But I don't see why it would hurt not to move school back a week. Just, just me. I, I don't. And, and one more thing. I was elected November, what, 20? And to, to vote to improve, improve education in Floyd County. And I've been getting a lot of phone calls, messages about the Dace May Valley thing. It is proven that smaller schools, smaller classes, kids learn more. It's proven. I mean, it's a fact. I'm not sure what the fuss is, but from what I'm hearing, it has a lot to do with sports. I, I don't know. I just wanted to let people of District 5 know that I've got your back. Nobody up here is back. I'm for my constituents, the people that elected me to try to do better, have better education for our children in Floyd County. I'm not, I know sports are great. You get scholarships to go to college, but I, I challenge anybody in here to name me five people from Floyd County that's made a career out of sports. There you may have a few coaches here and there, but professional sports. This is about education, folks. Smaller classes, smaller schools make for better test scores. That's, that's all I have to say. But I am for the people that, that wants a better education. That's the reason I was elected. Thanks.
Thank you. And if I can also make a comment, I totally agree that first of all, we have to keep our kids safe, and second, we need to educate them. And that should be what we're here for and what our priority is. As far as school moving back, I'd like to make the comment on that because this is my 31st year and based on my experience working in a school district for 30-plus years now, I feel like school is the best place for us to serve our students. We've had counselors go out to the community, to the, the Martin Community Center, to the campers, to the lodge, to serve kids. We've had family resource center directors go out to serve them. We've had lunches delivered to them. When we have our kids in school, we have the health services at the school. We have the counselor at the school. We have the teacher at the school to engage the kids in activities. We have the resource centers to get them what they need, all in one place for that child. And as of today, we have zero roads that are not going to be travelable for our buses. I've had one parent call today concerned about school starting, and I returned the call and there was no answer, so I asked for that parent to call me back. But we have the services and the people who love these children and can help them in our school buildings instead of us having to run out to all these locations. And I think that we can also better assess what each child and each family needs if they are with us in school, eating and getting the services from all the people we have hired in this district to serve our kids and our families. And they've done an amazing job with going out and doing this, with the 4,700 meals per day that's been served in this community and with all the services that have been provided. But with having the kids in school, learning with us while families are completing paperwork with FEMA and cleaning their homes and doing those things, I feel like it's definitely the best for the child.
Concerning the
I'd like one correction. The smaller school don't have a smaller classes. Every school has the same size in Floyd County, the classes. You know, like Presover, classroom. Every school, even the smaller number enrollment, the class is same size. You know, 15 kids in one class, one teacher. The smaller school don't have 10 kids and one teacher. You know what I mean?
Based on the enrollment, the numbers are the 24 for primary or, yeah, those numbers, but depending on how many enrolls at each school will depend on the size.
You've, you've got anywhere from 180 to 200 to school up the road, and you've got 45 to 50 down the road. The, the classroom sizes are going to be smaller. But as far as the meals and stuff, Mr. Pack, wherever you're at, I recommend, I, I commended you on the last meeting that we had, and I appreciate you. And I love the children in Floyd County, too. There's no doubt in my mind that everybody that, all you educators love your kids. Board members do, too. That's the reason I ran for school board member. Was not because of you adults or whatever. It was for these kids right here. I, I just don't see why it would hurt. You've got people, families that are suffering in District 5. I'm sure all over. And I'm, I'm just going to be quiet now because, but I, I've said my piece. Voters of District 5 and Floyd County, I've got your kids' back, and I want you to know that. There've been a lot of things said and done to me in the last two or three weeks that I'm not happy about, but I'm going to keep my mouth shut because that's what my mom taught me to do. When you're mad, you say things that you can't take back. Thank you. I appreciate every one of you, especially you educators. Thanks for all you do. Dale, Wes, you guys are doing a heck of a job, and I appreciate you.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Dr. Varia made the motion. I need a second. Junior second. All those in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, spotlight on student, staff, community achievements. And Bobby.
So good evening to all of you all tonight. We're going to celebrate two of our students that made it into the Roger Scholar Program. To be considered for the Roger Scholar Program, a student must be
A sophomore in the 45 county service area and have a grade point average of 3.0 or higher. Students must also want to develop their leadership and technology skills, entrepreneurship, and community service. A total of only 60 students will become Roger Scholars per year. Tonight, we get to celebrate two of our Floyd County students. Being a Roger Scholar gives students like these two access to scholarships at 19 colleges and universities in Kentucky. This past summer, Kendall Hall and Todd Prater attended a five-day program with other Roger Scholars where they developed their leadership skills, participated in team-building exercises, and worked with professionals in engineering, healthcare, and video production. At this time, I would like to call both of these students forward. Kendall is actually playing in a volleyball game right now. The Lady Jags are taking on Martin County, so go Lady Jags. So she has already got her award, but I would like at this time to call forward Todd Prater. Todd is the son of Jeff and Cece Prater of Hueysville. He's a member of the National Honor Society, the Student Technology Leadership Program, the Student Council, and the esports team, and he's also part of the Narrative Four Initiative at Floyd Central. And he's a drummer, which means that he can, you know, keep pretty good rhythm, I suppose. He's also in the law enforcement pathway at the Floyd County School of Innovation. So ladies and gentlemen, I want to present this award to Mr. Todd Prater. Once again, I just want to point out how big of a deal this is. Only 60 students across the 45 county area get this, and we had two. So congratulations to Todd and to Kendall, and once again, good luck tonight in that volleyball game for Kendall. Thanks, guys.
All right, at this time, Stumbo Elementary will come forward.
Superintendent Shepherd, Madam Chair, Mr. Shaw, board members, and guests. My name is Donna Robinson, and I'm the principal at John M. Stumbo Elementary School here in Floyd County. Beside me, I have Mr. Colby Huff, our school counselor. Ms. Watts is unable to be here tonight, as most of you know. Her father, Carl Stumbo, passed recently, and I'd like to recognize the hard work that Ms. Watts does and send out prayers for her, her and her family at this time. I want to get started with our presentation, and I want to remind you that this data is based on the 2018-19 information we have, so this will be updated once we get our new set of scores or data, so to speak, very soon here in the next month or so. Our enrollment is at 283 students. We have a free and reduced lunch percent of 91. Last year's attendance was a little over 91 percent, which is low for, low for us in a typical year, but that was second in the district. We have a special needs population of 17.7 percent. Our mission statement, "The faculty, staff of Stumbo Elementary believe all students can learn and accept the responsibility to provide a learning environment that will enable every student to reach his or her full potential in educational, social, physical, and emotional development." And I apologize that I didn't bring my glasses, so I can't see the screen, so I'm having to look from my papers here. I know some of y'all know what I'm talking about. The vision statement, "John M. Stumbo Elementary envisions a safe and hospitable learning environment that will stimulate and enrich the intellectual, physical, creative, social, excuse me, emotional and social development of the child by focusing on the joy of learning for all students, staff, parents, community members, that each may function as lifelong learners and contributing members of a complex and changing world." And as Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Anderson have been working with us at the administrative level on the district's mission and vision statement, we're going to also follow suit with that work at the, the school level, too, because ours needs to be redone as, as well. Our school motto is striving for success at JMS. Next generation college and career readiness. Our goal, and I want to say this comes, this information comes from our C-SIP, our Consolidated School Improvement Plan, which aligns obviously to the district improvement plan. Our goal is for all students to be on the right track to become college and career-ready when they leave our school. These are some of the things that we are doing. Mentoring and advisor-advisee, ILPs, annual visits to the Floyd County School of Innovation and the Area Technology Center, offering Algebra I to our eighth-grade students, utilizing our College and Career Navigator through Gear Up, which is a tremendous opportunity for us to have in the building to have that person partner with our counselor and our teachers to work through the ILPs and, and do these school visits and such. So it's, we have a kind of a unique opportunity there. Mr. Huff, since he's been there, working with College and Career Navigator, he's, we have guest speakers monthly from the vocational side of things and from, and from colleges as well. Next generation achievement. We will increase the average combined proficiency rate in reading and math for elementary grades from 75.3 in 2019, as I said before, to 90 percent in 2024. We will also increase the average combined proficiency rate in reading and math for middle grades from 82.9 in 2019 to 90 percent in 2024. And we have until 2024 to, to reach these goals, so that's why we have that date in there. Next generation gap, increase the consolidated student group at the elementary levels in math from 34, 34.2 proficiency rate in 2019 to 66.5 in 2024. We also want to increase the consolidated student group at the middle school grades in reading from 55.6 to 66.5 in 2024. Next generation growth, collaborate to decrease the percentage of student scoring at the novice level in reading and elementary grades from 9.2 to 0 in 2024, and collaborate to decrease the percentage of student scoring at the novice level in reading and middle grades from 8.9 to 0 in 2024. And I want to say that, that, that sounds a little bit hard to do, and it is, but I'm, I'm proud to say that for several years, we had zero novice at the elementary and middle level, so we will get there again. Strategies for meeting goals. PLCs, coaching sessions, professional developments are focused, focused on the key core work process, specifically one and three, design and deploy standards. So we're doing a lot of standards work with our faculty and staff. Design and deliver assessment literacy. Obviously, our teachers got to be well-versed in what the standard is asking them to do or what kids will be able to do in the end. Differentiation, differentiating instruction based on data analysis is key to everything we do. We must, we know that we've got to differentiate, differentiate our instruction so that we can meet the needs of all of our kids, and, and it has to be based on the data that, the most recent data we have. So even though the data we have in our building from the state level goes back a couple of years, we have data going on all the time in our building, weekly, daily, we have new data. So we change what we have to do depending on what the kids need at that current time. Building initiatives. We have a MTSS and a coordinator, after-school ESS, and I just want to say, our after-school program this last year in summer school was very, I mean, it was just intense. It was very focused, specifically in summer, we really honed in on the math fluency and reading fluency to address the gaps that were there. Lot of success. Teachers worked really hard with those kids. We have a Unite coordinator. Data analysis is ongoing. We, we even made a data room, which we used to have, and we analyzed that all the time, but we put all of our data in a room and have our PLC meetings in there so that it, we are looking at our freshest data and base our decisions on that. We have academic tutors. We place both our tutor, one in second and one in first, because that's where we find most of our, our gaps are at this time. Site team members, SEL-related arts rotation, professional development. I just talked about it with my teachers today, constantly challenge them to get out of their comfort zone and be willing to grow. I ask them to, you know, join us and grow for our kids, and I told, mentioned to them that, you know, one of the schools this year, like we were going to set it on fire, and talked about, you know, the kids in our class that are not maybe so eager to get started or not excited about math and, and the fact that maybe nobody has set them on fire with that subject yet. So we really want to use our relationships and our professional development to fuel us and keep us moving forward. Our teachers participate in a new teacher cohort. We have Save the Children tutors, which are great assets, our building. We have two ladies that are very strong, and they work specifically with reading in our primary grades. We do middle school mentoring and weekly, I mentioned the weekly PLCs. You know, one of the things that is, one of the many benefits of being a small school is that we know every kid in our building. And when we review that data weekly, sometimes more often than that, we can address the needs right away, whether it's through, you know, differentiated instruction or one of the tutors that we have giving some extra assistance or Save the Children personnel. So definitely one of the benefits of being a small school is knowing what our kids need academically. Some of our accomplishments this past year, Ms. Lester and Ms. Gabber were nominated for Teacher's, Teacher of the Year. Our elementary and middle school archery represented, or represented at the, represented us, sorry, at the state NASP competition in Louisville. We had 34 Stumbo students chosen to display artwork at the Mountain Arts Center. Jonah Watts placed fifth in the science, in science at the Regional Governors Cup. Our middle school academic team were district champs this past year, and we celebrate our kids weekly with Student of the Week, but we also have a Student of the Month that is displayed as soon as you come in the front doors of the school, so all guests can see that. And one of the unique things that I think we do to celebrate our accomplishments is each month, we have a, we call it a spirit assembly, and it's a pep rally about academics. It's a pep rally about extracurriculars. We cheer, we call our students down if they've done something that month. We recognize their kids that are in the 25-point club for AR. We recognize kids that have competed that week in academics and placed. We recognize volleyball, whatever the case, but it is not necessarily, it's mainly academic, but we do throw the sports in with, with it. But I'd like to invite you all out. I need to send an email out and get you all to come out one day when we have our spirit assemblies. And we dance and go a little crazy. It takes about less than 30 minutes. We do it once a month. Everybody wears their black and gold shirts, and that's how you get to come down on the floor and dance, is if you have school colors on. So everybody's in black and gold that day, and we have a great time celebrating our success. So that's one of the unique things we do. Opportunities, of course, we have the same thing the bigger schools do. We have archery, basketball, cheer, softball, volleyball, academic team, future problem-solving, STLP, Unite, Student Council, Gear Up, Club, Frisky Advisory, bus monitors. And one thing I'll, I'll say, since we are small, is that you'll, you'll see a lot of the same faces on the different teams, so it kind of makes it tough for our parents because they're, they're traveling a lot with those kids. But our kids are definitely multi-sport, multi-extracurricular people because they, they have to participate in a lot. And finally, I was thinking about something to put in the end, and I spoke with Bobby, and I did want to mention the flood relief and how we participated in that. If you'll look, can we go ahead one slide to the next one? If you'll look, and I don't know that everybody knows this, over in the left corner, our friskies coordinators were boated. They had to take a boat to serve these families. They rode a boat in and out, and then they had to go, sometimes they were on the boat two to four times to serve meals to the people at different areas of Ginnie Wiley. So our friskies coordinators worked 15 days at Ginnie Wiley Lodge, serving food and other needs to 170 or more people. So I want to just give a shout out to Angie Martin, our frisky coordinator, is just absolutely amazing, and all the coordinators in the district, because that is definitely going above and beyond to, to meet the needs of our people. Our cafeteria staff, along with others, served a total, just, this is just at our school, 4,641 meals during the flood relief efforts. At one point, we had the ovens full, and I had to call Donna Hamilton, and I said, "We can't do fries. We've got to do corn. The ovens are full." So, but we made it happen. 4,641 meals, and like Mr. Slung said earlier, hats off to Dale and Donna and all the cafeteria workers that made that happen. Very proud of the next statement as well. Four staff members from our school. So not only did I have, as you could see, Angie, or who, I don't know who's Wes, whoever's moving, move over to the pictures. Most of these pictures, a lot of these are at South Floyd because you can see some of us in the cafeteria. us in the cafeteria, some of my teachers, and classified people as well, but you can also see them at South Floyd. So for over a week, four sent, two would help with certain distribution of clothing, two of them would help with meals, and it was totally voluntary. So I'm proud of my people, but I'm also proud to serve in this county, where we are willing to do whatever is necessary to help our people. Do you all have any questions for us?
I'd just like to say, you all have a great team in place there, and it's obvious you're doing a lot of good things. And as I travel throughout the community, I hear nothing but positive things about your school. I want to congratulate you on that and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
First, congratulations on working with the flood relief. You do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Second, if I'm misunderstanding any, I did not see any plan to increase attendance.
Yes, ma'am. We do have, we've worked with Ms. Springer on developing an attendance plan each school has for this school year, which takes us back to what we were doing pre-COVID, and making sure that for us, one of the things that makes us successful is we do set goals for kids, individual goals, and meet with those families. But I make those phone calls myself, and I know they wanted me to pass that along to somebody else each year, but that's something I'm passionate about, I want my kids in school. So I make the phone calls myself. On home visits, you know, I'll take my resource center director with me, or Colby, or even a teacher if necessary. But we've already developed our attendance plan for this year, and going to put it in full swing as soon as we get started, making sure we communicate to our families and that they do understand that the policies are in place, and that the kids have to be in attendance to learn. That's the best way we could serve them, is to have them in our buildings. So I think once the attendance plan is in action throughout the, our plans are in action throughout the district, you will see those numbers go up. Of course, we're still going to face some battles with COVID and sickness and some flood stuff still, you know, dealing with that, but we've, we've got good solid plans. So I think that if we get back to some normalcy, once we get back in school, that the attendance will naturally increase.
Donna, I remember a few years back, the Stumbo school is the highest attendance for many, many years.
Yes, ma'am.
Every day you see the highest attendance at Stumbo. And then second, like your school was number one, number second, not in district, in the state.
Yes.
What happened? Like your novice rate is so high, I know, you're doing, trying very hard job, but your school like so higher level before, what happened? And my second question, like our superintendent board, what can help you to achieve your previous goal?
Yeah. Well, our novice rate in comparison is, is not, not really high. It seems like a high number, but if you compare it across the state, it is not very high. You are absolutely correct. We have been able to have a lot of success, and I hope to continue that success. We've got a great team in place. They're willing to learn and grow, and that's what we've got to do. We've got to, you know, we've got to continue to grow as our kids change, as curriculum changes, the state assessment has changed. We have to make the changes necessary. You know, there's always a little bit of growing pains when you have an assessment change, or staff turnover, and things of that nature. But for me, the, I think the key is, is that we keep moving in a positive direction. We, you know, we're not letting up. We're, as our new people come in, or we train them to our best of our ability, we want them to be experts in their areas. And as the new assessment was released, you know, we're, we're one of the first, well, we're as quick, as fast as we can to get that information out to our, our teachers and students so that they can prepare. You know, that's what we do.
Whatever help you need, our superintendent is ready to help you.
Oh, she helps tremendously, yes. She's always willing to help, and I've got Ms. Crater, Ms. Crater is our, my supervisor this year. I think she's, she's an expert on instruction and curriculum, and she's willing to be there to help with whatever we need this year. So if we need help, we'll definitely shout out for assistance, but Rachel's already extended that to us, and, and I'm sure if she needs assistance beyond that, you know, we're, we're great at networking, so we'll, we'll do what we need to do.
And Donna, I know for you, your team is great. For us as a board member and public, we like to see the result.
Yes. I do too. Oh, I'm competitive. I expect my, fully expect my attendance to be up there at the top again, and for us to be a highly successful school. You know, we've got the, the pieces in place, it's just, we've got, we've got some, you know, growing pains to do. And like I said, as things change, we've got to change to, to, to meet those things.
And for attendance, our director's right here. She can help you, and you know, Cassandra, we have one person for the attendance also. So if you need to speak with them, you need any help, you just let them know.
Thank you, thank you very much, we will.
Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it, all of you.
Thank you.
And your school, I know fifteen when I become board member, you're the thirtieth school in the district. Now your school is cleaner school in the district.
Thank you. I'll pass it along to my custodial lead, Shirley. She takes great pride in, in what she does.
Good job. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Great job.
Our next thing is community comments to the Board of Education. The only one that is on the clipboard is Greta Gilbert.
Good evening, Ms. Shepherd, and Board members, and Mr. Shaw, and guests. I was gone last month on vacation, but I'm glad to be back with you all. And, you know, it's the eve of our opening day celebration at the MAC, which we haven't got to have that for three years, and it's pretty exciting, since we had an in-person opening day at the MAC. So once again, FCEA and Floyd County KESPA and our KEA Unifor office, we're working together to provide refreshments for everybody, breakfast items and coffee and soft drinks for tomorrow. Just a few things that we've been working on lately. In the last three weeks, I've been in contact with Floyd County KEA members that have experienced flooding. We've had members, family members as well. It's been heartbreaking, to say the least. As soon as we heard about the flooding, I started getting texts from KEA leaders and staff, asking how they could help. KEA has gotten a seventy-five thousand dollar grant from NEA Member Benefits to help members, and I have shared the application with many of our employees. Several of them have applied for aid. I know of one teacher that lost everything. We have a dozen or so teachers that have extreme property damage from the flooding, but the water did not enter their home. It will take a long time and a lot of help for them to get back to normal. Members from other KEA locals, like Breckenridge County, are sending gift cards, supplies, bedding, et cetera, to help here in Floyd County and other areas. Floyd County EA did that for Western Kentucky in the spring, so it's nice to see them helping us. I only represent the certified members, but I also care about our classified employees, and several of them have been displaced, and KEA's been helping them as well. I want to applaud the efforts of everyone in Floyd County who have helped with meals, housing, cleanup, counseling, transportation for those in need. I've never been more proud to be an employee of Floyd County Schools. We will continue to find ways to help our students, our members, and our community. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Greta. The next person who wanted to speak is Dr. Varia.
Good evening. I want to do some few things, because I personally noticing the difference. Few, like two months back, we just passed the resolution, free school supplies, laptop, et cetera. It was just happen, but you never know due to flood. It's become so important. I was like, L.R. Elementary, open house. It is my personal, I was there. Parents were so happy for the free school supply. It is not only good for the parents, for the teachers also, because teachers always put their own money for buying supply, fundraising, so they spend more time to educating children than fundraising. And the kids, they're jumping with happiness with a backpack, backpack. I, I was surprised, like this was, then I asked what the difference, like little kid, you know, kids always, when I go to school, kids always say, "Doc, Doc, you are our friend." So I am their friend, and I love that. And second thing, what I'm noticing at, like with the flood, I did go myself to visit different places, then I go with the school team, like our superintendent, with the school boss and all. You would not, it's just so heartbreaking. People like, you know, the clinic, the houses, up to like my vest, there was a dirt inside. It was so thick, you cannot even remove before the power goes. And so all the help we did, like free, like people really loved the shelter in the flood central, shower, laundry, and you know, sometime we don't feel is important. But when you the situation, you realize how important it is. So our school system did wonderful job, and when I go, myself is different. And now, you know, I'm, I'm running for the school board, so I'm too old for campaign, but I love the campaign. I was just like, I was just doing work for the flood related. But you know, you meet everybody, and one gentleman came, nice, good-looking, handsome guy. He'd only like with me, my housekeeper. She asked, "Do you know Dr. Chadra?" She says, "She is the first one." I said, "That first first when I born this world." And she, but the word hold me in her head. So it's so beautiful. Then other three, four people came, and they say they lost almost everything, even his isolated places, and they were so happy with our supply. So that's a good thing, like our superintendent doing, we all helping him, you know, we board make a policy. She had to plan how to handle. And you know, second thing, people may not remember, free school supply, maybe the Floyd County School System may be first in Kentucky, may be first in Nessen. And same way, many years back, we started free breakfast and lunch program. I still remember the day Dr. Henry, we have worked so hard to fill up the application Obama time, and we started free breakfast and lunch. And you know, everybody will know, elementary kid, you have a ninety-two percent poor and reduced lunch. But same kid, like South Floyd Elementary, before there were middle school and high school, the kids, when you go high school, they only seventy percent free and reduced lunch. What if when they twenty percent, suddenly they become, parent become rich? No. The kids feel like shamed to be poor, so they don't eat, because I say, twelve o'clock, they go home, they don't come back, because they don't have money to buy lunch, so they never come back. And it was so work out well, and now we have a fruit and vegetable grant, all elementary school have now every day. So all the things we doing, and you know, you watching more and more, when you flood related, visiting every home and campaigning. I just loved it. People come and tell me, "How would you enjoy doing?" It's, it's proud in that way. So thank you, and, and thank all the board member, what we doing, and we should continue. And your school, I know I entered your graduation, your kids do very well, but I still like your kids were like number third in the state, your highest attendance. I want to go back, same place.
Okay, moving along. Number four, there is no new information for that. So number five, A, received the report from Trace Creek and Rosteron for the temporary bus garage rebuild of the new bus garage. And I think it's Jeff?
Yes. I'll reintroduce myself. It's been a couple of months since you've seen me. Name's Jeffrey Williams, I'll be the project manager for Trace Creek on the rebuilding of the new bus garage. Let's give you a real quick update where we're at on the temporary facility. Had a little bit of some lead time issues on a louver and a fan, but those materials have been delivered today and are installed to be, are scheduled to be installed on Wednesday. Well, as we finish up some electrical items, getting all the equipment that's been moved over, hooked up, helping get all that stuff tested, we should have a final, a final inspection, but the state inspector will be back Friday to take a look and assess, you know, all the changes that we've done to determine if we'll be able to move in. I have really high hopes that he's going to give us the go green light on it, and everything should be good. Don't expect any major hiccups now, so going on over to the new bus garage. We do have the demo package, put out the bid. It's at the bid next Wednesday, two o'clock. All bids will be coming here to the board office. We'll be here to assist in opening the bids and taking a look and reading through them. So hoping to have a good turnout. We're inviting plenty of contractors, some local contractors, to bid on it, and hopefully to get things rolling on that. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Michael, who is RTA, to give a quick update on the look ahead for the rest of the phases.
Thank you, Jeffries. Yeah, Jeffrey and I are on the phone, I feel like, multiple times a day. We, we're working hard on all of these pieces and parts. As far as, and working through the code issues on the temporary bus garage, I think we've, I think we've kind of resolved that now, and that's moving ahead. As far as the new bus garage, we had a wonderful meeting this past Friday. All of our design team met with Ms. Hackworth and Mr. Halbert and his staff, and we've basically landed on a floor plan, and, and it never ceases to amaze me. I mean, I do this all the time, but when you, when you listen to the folks, the end users, and their, you know, their needs and desires, because they're really the experts here, right? The people working on the buses in this building. It's, it's amazing, things that you, that we wouldn't have otherwise thought of, and vice versa. And I think we, we had some of that going both ways in our meeting, and, and some really good ideas came out of it, and we really tweaked it down and, and got to a really nice plan. So what that, that is moving ahead. The next steps are kind of coordinating with our, our structural, that there, something that I don't know that we talked about so much in the past, that there are some, some unsuitable soils on the site, so we will be moving ahead, looking at some recommendations from the geotechnical engineer for rammed aggregate piers to stabilize the soils. So that, that will be part of, of what's going on kind of below the building, the new building. As I mentioned before, we're also moving it out of the floodway towards the street several feet, but we, we should still be able to have that parking along the street like we're having now. So we're, we're moving ahead on all fronts, and, and we're, we're looking to have our, our next phases together just as, as soon as possible. We're working through some issues that just came up this morning, related to site utilities in terms of the timeline, but I was hoping that we could, we could have a bid package or a phase two, let's say, a phase one being the demo in about a month, and it's looking like that may be pushed a few weeks. But we, believe me, we are pressing on this schedule. I'm pushing all my consultants very hard to, to press this along at just as fast as possible.
I'll touch on that just a little bit more. What we're, one of our biggest hurdles is going to be the lead time on the pre-engineer metal building, and we're looking at a minimum of twenty weeks. So what we're going to start focusing on is... So what we're going to start focusing on is, in the short term here, is getting that metal building ordered. As we get, when we get that metal building ordered, we have a 20-week window to get the rest of this taken care of, and also get on site to get, you know, the site ready for the pre-engineering building. So I think that our next big hurdle, as Michael mentioned, is pushing to get this metal building out the bid in a phase two. That way, we can get, you know, start crunching away at that lead time, and in the meantime, work on the other items as far as getting the site taken care of, getting, you know, the site ready for the building. So when the building arrives, we're able to start with the erection of it and, you know, follow on through with the rest of the work. Any questions?
How many phases is it?
Well, we're, we're thinking right now it's three phases. We're, we're trying to put, put as much in that phase two as, as we possibly can. Right now, it's looking like mechanical electrical plumbing inside the building, as well as possibly some site development outside of the immediate building itself, might be pushed into a, a separate phase. Just again, to try to get that metal building ordered just as soon as possible.
Do you have any idea what date our mechanics are going to be able to get into the temporary building?
When, I'm hoping next week, you know, pending the rest of the hookups on the rest of equipment that needs to be brought in from the electrician, everything I'm pushing to have ready for the inspector to review Friday when he comes back. And if everything goes well with the inspection, he should be able to give us a temporary until our, you know, work just begin.
I guess no more questions. Consider approve the Floyd County Data Security Best Practices presentation, Serena and Wes.
Shaw, esteemed members of the Board of Education, and our guests. I'm Serena Anderson, Executive Officer of Instruction and Chief Information Officer. With me is Wes Turner, District Technology Coordinator. And as you know, one of our main goals in Floyd County is student and staff safety. Mr. Turner will present the data security best practices that we have in place to safeguard our stakeholders.
Okay, so as we know, data security is not the most exciting thing to talk about, but that is an important thing that we do in the district, to provide our, not only our staff, but our students with the most secure account we can. And as part of this presentation that we do annually, is we want to tell people what personal information is, and then what we need to be aware of when we're accessing all of our curriculums and student information systems and all that stuff in the district. So what is PI? Personal information is a first or last name in a combination with an initial or any account credentials that can also contain like credit card numbers, a PIN or a password, a student social security number or staff social security number, your taxpayer ID, driver's license number, passport number, or identifiable health information. PI for students also includes their state assigned ID that's part of the student information system. So that's a, a lot of things we see is, is people don't realize that that state ID is actually an identifiable personal information on students in the district. So that's one thing we have to remind people a lot about that state ID number. So actually, we're going to go to, to our data security guidelines page next. So this is some of the things we're doing here in the district, as far as our staff accounts and our student accounts. One thing, a big initiative that we got coming up this year, and I'm going to talk about here in a minute, is multi-factor authentication. This is something that we piloted for the state of Kentucky, for our region, and we will have this probably implemented by Thanksgiving of this year. And here on the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit more about what that is. So also, we have a password policy, a 15-character minimum for all staff accounts. They have to change their password every 180 days, and they cannot reuse the last 12 passwords. Some, some guidelines that we tell people, you know, don't use passwords that have the word password. Don't use names common to like yourself, don't use your first and last name in your password. Don't use seasons, months, family members' names, pets, or sports teams. Do not send emails or documents without first checking to make sure those items does not contain personal information. Be aware that once you send an email, it is your responsibility of sending that email. So once it leaves and you hit that send button, what you send is your responsibility. Also, never share your password. Don't put your password on sticky notes on your, on your monitors. Don't, don't put them somewhere where they're easy, that somebody could walk into your classroom and get access to those. And one thing that we also see a lot now, especially with hackers and stuff in, in the, in the areas, is opening email links from people you don't recognize. So a lot of times, they like to use phishing emails, where they'll take somebody's name that, that you may know, but it's actually not coming from that person, and, and they use that as a way to, to try to get access to your account. So anytime we ask, we see, we have people that see that, we always, if you're worried about it, we always tell them to call our office, and we can help them going forward to make sure that's not something that is not legit. Never share your personal information online. Do not use student SSIDs with other identifiers without talking to somebody from our department first. If your Floyd County BOE email is on a personal device, we ask that that device always have a passcode on it. Don't make it easy for somebody to come up when your phone's laying around and access your phone and, and get access to that email.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Like, you could notice, 180 days, you change your password, and you have to remember 12 passwords, cannot reuse it. That's very difficult to remember, six years, almost, 12 passwords.
So as part, as part of those KU guidelines.
And you know, and you recommend, okay, don't write your password anyplace, because somebody can read it. So your memory will be start, remember 12 passwords in 15 syllables, so log password.
Yeah, so a lot of times, we tell people to use passphrases. So like, for example, I like pepperoni pizza, so I had a password once that I love pepperoni pizza. That met that 15-character password, and it was easy for me to remember. But a passphrase is 150 times more safe than using like a name, like my Wesley, Wesley Turner and my year I, year I was born or something. So, so passphrases are something we tell people a lot to use, because they're easy to remember, and they're a whole lot more secure as well.
You know, for me, I have a little shallow memory, but I have to write down my Apple password different, and my laptop, and this, seven password I have, but it's still very hard. I have to look at my cell phone, my password. How can you remember 12 passwords? I know.
One good thing is, it does tell you. So if you try to reuse one of those ones, it'll say, hey, you've used this already. So you know, we always know that, we got to figure out another one, but, but I will agree, it is hard to remember 12 over, every six, every six months, so I understand that.
Thank you.
So one thing, I'll go over here real quick, is I know I talked about the, the multi-factor authentication that we're going to implement district-wide for all staff, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what that is. So MFA, multi-factor authentication, what every employee needs to know, and we're going to have a lot of documentation and talk with our schools and stuff over the next few months about what, what this plan is and what it's going to incur. But FCS is working to provide the most secure online network possible to protect not only your information, but the information of our students. And in order to do this, we're going to take some additional proactive steps to make sure our accounts are as secure as possible, and, and make sure that we cut down on phishing attempts, have an account compromised and using those accounts in a way that you don't want somebody to use your account. So as I said, all employees will start using multi-factor authentication this year, especially when they're logging into district accounts outside of our district network. So there's two, there's two aspects to multi-factor, and one of them's called conditional access. And what, what we'll have people do is they're going to get prompted for that multi-factor authentication when they're outside our network. So most of the time, issues occur when people are outside of our, our network. So as long as you're in our district and using a district-provided device and on our network, you're not going to get prompted for that multi-factor. But anytime you're trying to access your account from outside the district, that's when multi-factor will get prompted, and you'll have to give either a passcode that's comes through a text message, or there'll be an app that you'll have installed on a personal device that'll prompt up and say, hey, I know, we noticed you're trying to sign into your device, do you want to approve this, or do you want to decline it? So that, that's just that extra bit of security that you'll know, if somebody's trying to access your account and it's not you, you're, you're, they're not going to get in there unless you say, hey, I'm going to approve this or I'm not. So multi-factor is a key to cutting back on that account compromise, compromise, oh, that's not a word, cutting back on accounts getting compromised. And we're, we know that it's, it's happened a lot in, across the state in multiple districts, and a lot of times, if we had multi-factor installed, that would not have been the case. Accounts would not have been compromised. And so as I said, accessing your account, when you're doing multi-factor, will be a text message on a cell phone or using the app. So we see that it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve with everything new that comes around. Getting used to something different is hard to do, but we know that not only our accounts, but what we have access in the district is important to protect. So while there'll be a little bit of a learning curve, it's going to cut down on, on people accessing a lot of things that they shouldn't be accessing by having an account compromised. So I think the last slide, I'm not going to go through all the, the most common data breaches and how to prevent them. That's something that we, anybody can look at. It's just some basic stuff about what not to do and what you should do. Like I said earlier, about putting sticky notes on, on a monitor that somebody can walk up to. It's just some common guidelines that you, you can use to follow to help protect your account. And I think that's the last one. So has anybody got any questions on the, anything to do with our accounts?
So when should we expect, when we login at home or in a hotel, to have to have this happen?
So we've already, we've already started with a central office. That was the first, first place we're, we're starting the project with. That way, we're in the building with everybody that, that we're going to turn it on for. That way, we can work out any kind of little bugs that we'll come up with. So I think we've already started with our finance and HR people and some of our other departments. So we hope to have, have a central office done within the next couple of weeks, and then we're going to work out a rollout schedule to do one school at a time, enable for one school, have our people come out to the school and be present. That way, if anybody needs any help, as long with the documentation and stuff that we send out, we'll be there in the building for that day of the enabling the multi-factor. That way, they can come to us while we're there if they have any issues. But like I said, we want, it's something we want to have, try to have done by, by Thanksgiving, you know, district-wide.
Do you use 15 syllables for your, your cell phone password?
Not my, you're talking about like the passcode to access your cell phone? You, you can do four or six, that's all you can do for the, the passcode itself to log on to the cell phone, but.
You know, our cell phone, just every time we just sit down, right, even minute, so you have to like 50 syllable, it will be so hard to push 15.
I'm lazy and just use my thumbprint, you know, that way I don't have to type any or facial ID now, so they kind of made it where you, you can kind of be lazy and secure at the same time.
One day, you need to sit down with us as one-hour lecture, that will be.
Anytime, it'll be fine.
If there's no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good one.
Okay, everybody's had an opportunity to look over 5A through M. Are there any comments? 5A through M. If not, I entertain a motion to approve four, number four, 5A through M.
I'll make the motion.
Keith made the motion.
I'll second.
Junior seconded. All those in favor signify with yes.
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 Yes, and the motion passes. Okay, I'm going to ask you to do the same thing with the action by consent. Before we do anything else, Ian, we've had a request from Dr. Varia to have the Green Dot program discussed, so if you want to come forward, we'll let you do that.
Thank you so much for letting us discuss the Green Dot program. So this is going to be our second year with Green Dot, and Green Dot seeks to change the culture of violence in high schools. And having said that, I do not want you guys to think that we had a violent high school. We have very few fights, but it's not really about fighting as much as it is sometimes about cyberbullying, domestic and dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking incidences. And what Green Dot does is it, they come in and they train our kids to be leaders and bystanders, so that they can see what other kids are doing, and they can help stop it. And we're not looking for those leaders who are like the quarterback of the football team. It could be somebody who's just a leader in the lunchroom. They, they have a lot of kids, the kids pick the leaders who get trained. And we start with, we get so many from freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior classes, and we train those kids to be bystanders, and then what they do is they can understand how to help other kids. And sometimes, with the way that kids changed after COVID, we really needed something to help with, with cyberbullying. These kids don't understand sometimes what happens when you're behind a screen and you talk to each other. And so it's just really good for them to see the legalities of it, and it's really good for them to see, you know, what could happen. And so we have lots of scenarios, and the kids take an all-day training where they get to look at everything. So our kids have really enjoyed it, just because sometimes they don't, they don't understand what dating violence is. And that's because they, you know, they've grown up in homes that have had violent relationships. And so we have kids who, it's not just about fighting at school, it's about violence at home, too. So we've had a really good run with Green Dot, and we're getting ready to implement our second year. You're only trained as a leader once, and then this year, we will pick up even more leaders and train more people. So any questions?
No. I just read that whole program, and I really like it. I only like requested our board chair, public to know how good program and how our system doing for safety of the kids.
Yes.
You know, they worry about, about the gun shot, but this is just, it happen rarely, but this happen bullying every day.
Yes.
And with social media, it becomes just so common.
Absolutely.
So I just public to know, okay, how good program this is, and we should follow. Thank you.
I think this is an excellent program.
It's a good idea, it's good security for the, all the kids.
Yes.
But their parents has to know about that, kids has to learn about that.
I like the fact that it's not just about school, it's about life skills. And, and that's one of the big things that I think when we talked about it and bringing it into our school, we talked about the fact that it's not just about, you know, because we don't have a violent school. When you look at the types of write-ups that we had before Green Dot came in, most of it was, you didn't have pencil, you didn't have paper, you maybe fell asleep in class. That's about 90% of our write-ups. I mean, now with free school supplies, we don't have those write-ups, I want you to know that. But, but, you know, when you're thinking about a violent school, it's not us, but when you look at the fact that you're looking at violence in life, then, then these kids need to know how to deal with that. And so it's, it's just about preventing violence. And so it's just about preventing violence in life, and that's what we really liked about it.
And you are right, when they learn in the school, they can follow at home also, like domestic violence and all. They understand the bullying, domestic violence, they grow up there. No, good program, very good program.
And they can't learn at school if they're coming from such violent homes. I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I know you're only in the second year of this, but can you see some extreme situations where this has already helped?
I will tell you that last year, during our second training with our second group of kids, we purposely picked some girls who were in toxic relationships, and we put them in that training. And I will tell you that three of them came to me after the training, and we had a long discussion about it. And they're no longer in that relationship. I mean, and that may seem little, but it's not.
Could have led to worse things.
Yeah, it could have led to much, much worse things. And so those are three girls who had no idea that the more jealous a guy becomes, the more toxic that relationship becomes over time. They kind of thought, well, I thought, you know, if he's really jealous, it's because he loves me, and I don't want it to get any worse than what it is. And we had, you know, and one thing is, you have to have people at school that these kids will come to and say, we've got to talk. And, you know, and like, I've sat in on some of the trainings, and we've talked about things, and, you know, those three girls are in a completely different point in their life because of that. And a lot of people may think, we're not there to help them with dating, but we're there to help them get through high school. And that's a big deal, especially to those three girls.
Sounds like a great program. Has this been discussed at the other schools?
I know that at the July meeting, Floyd Central is starting it, and Prestonsburg had started it before COVID, and then it kind of fell apart, and I'm sure that because of COVID, you know. And so I'm sure that they will get back on board. They also have elementary and middle school programs, but like, we had them come in before prom, and we had, we split the high school kids who were going to prom, and we just talked to the kids going to prom. We talked to them about consent right before prom, and, you know, that gets a little touchy, so we split the boys into a group, and we split the girls into a group, and we had some really good discussions just about consent.
Sounds like a really good program.
So, I mean, we really like it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any program for the staff? If this have a student, what about the staff? Do you think we can start some program for the staffs?
I will tell you that the Green Dot lady, as we call her, came in today, and she talked to our staff, and she also went to South Floyd, I mean, to Floyd Central Day, and she talked to their staff. And she has gone in classes, like in Mr. DeRocic's health class, when he was teaching health instead of PE, she went in, she did some cyberbullying, she did some relationship talks, because there are a lot of freshmen in health class. And so she is available to come in, you know, I mean, all you've got to do is just get with her, and she will come in. She came to our open house. She wants to start a Green Dot club where you can like maybe meet once a week and do some community service, and just kind of get together and talk. And like I said, we weren't a violent school, but these kids need somebody to help, so, okay? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I asked you to look over the consent items. Steve, did you have anything to pull?
I have V.
Keith, what was yours?
V.
V. Dr. Varia, did you have anything? Junior?
No.
And the chair doesn't, so I'll go back to Steve.
No, I don't.
Okay. Keith, go ahead.
You know, when I ran for public office, one of the things that I ran on was anytime that we had an opportunity to lower property taxes, I said that I would. And I'm trying to be a man of my word on everything that I've said. That being said, the state figures that they sent to the board would be at a percentage of 68.3, and I understand where the superintendent's coming from, keeping it at 69. It'd be my recommendation that we go with the state number of 68.3 and give that back to the people of Floyd County, considering the events that's been going on in the past month. Any kind of break that we can give to our constituents, we need to do it. So I would make a motion to do it at 68.3 rather than 69%.
Is it, do you want to say anything about that? It's your recommendation? Okay.
My recommendation was keeping it as it was last year.
69 is what, point oh is what it was last year. Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we move it to 68.3 and give the taxpayers a break.
We have a motion on the floor to lower it to 60, the tax rate to 68.3.
Second.
Second. Steve? Okay, I will call for a vote. Steve?
Yes.
Dr. Varia? 68, I think she's confused by what we're doing. Keith made a motion to lower the tax to 68.3. The recommendation is to keep it at 69. So we need either a yes or no vote for Keith's motion. Okay, so you have a no vote. Okay.
You voting yes or no? To keep it or lower it?
Keith?
Let's make sure everybody votes correct.
Yes. And Junior?
I want to keep it where it is, where it was last year, because I've seen the figures, and I know that we need the same amount of money coming in as we did last year in order to keep the programs we have funded.
You will have the same money coming in.
Okay, so we have, so your vote is no.
Right.
And the chair votes no. So the motion fails. So in favor of the 69 cent per 100 excess value as was last year. So there's no increase. Okay, so is there, no other? We're not pulling anything else, so I need a motion to pass 6A through DD.
I'll make that motion.
Junior made the motion. I need a second.
Are you including setting the taxes on that? Or because I pulled it out, do we not have to have one special vote on it so that all of y'all can vote no?
I just, that's what we did.
Not to lower taxes, because that'll be what it'll be.
Right.
Keep it at 69.
Right. They voted against lowering taxes.
You're voting not lower taxes.
Right, yeah.
Somebody's got to make a motion on it.
Well, we already did that. You made the motion, and Steve seconded.
I made a motion to lower it.
Lower it, right.
Okay, now you have to ask for a motion to keep it as the same.
That's what's on here, Keith. The recommendation of 69, that will be included in the...
They're making a motion right now to accept all of six.
Junior made the motion to, that's considered in all the others.
Okay.
Okay.
Junior made the motion?
Yeah.
To accept it.
And I seconded, and all those in favor, well, we can't do that because it won't...
No, you can't.
No, it won't work that way.
That's my point.
Okay. All right, let's do, let's do A through U and W through DD. Make a motion. I need a motion to pass or accept all the other items and start over.
I'll make that motion.
Junior made the motion. A second?
I'll second.
Okay, Keith seconded. Those in favor of everything except V at this moment signify with yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion carries. All right, let's go back to V. Consider approve adoption of the tax rate below the current year for as 69.0, which does not raise the taxes. It keeps it at the rate last year. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Junior made the motion. Do I have a second? Dr. Varia seconded. Those in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Yeah, giving the same rate. I like the lower.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes.
I vote no for the record.
We're voting no as well.
Right, right. Okay. Do we have an executive session to discuss anything? No? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn. Dr. Varia made the motion, seconded by Steve. All those in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you.